Councilor Brown?
Here.
Councilor Weaver?
Here.
Councilor Roth?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
Councilor Barton? And Mayor Lawrence?
Here.
We have called to do this.
Please look at the minutes on June 11, 2018 regular meeting.
Mayor, for motion to approve minutes of meeting?
Sir.
Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Roth to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11. Is there, are there any changes to be made? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved.
Welcome visitors. Ms. Hammond thought I was gonna say something about her, but I'm not. I guess he's rubbing blue with the crowd and his anniversary's coming us next month, so I want everybody to a team. Next item, the approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections? All the favors, particularly by saying hi, the public's way, just the fans. Next item is a public hearing to consider vacating Finley Avenue. Call the public hearing to order. Is anyone here that would want to speak in opposition of us vacating Finley Avenue? Is anyone here that'd like to speak for vacating Finley Avenue?
Should I come to the public? I don't know. Y'all have the information, of course. I just wanted to say that I don't think anybody in Alcoa, except those of us that own property adjoining it, even knew that it was ever Finley Avenue. So vacating it's really kind of, you know, an easy thing.
I don't think we knew it either.
Probably not. It is, the generations, it's been used, you know, not as well for decades.
Anyone else? Hearing none, closing the public hearing. Next item under new business is approve vacating Finley Avenue Resolution Number 18-0625.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 18-0625.
Second?
Motion by Councilor Weaver, second by Councilor Brown to approve Resolution Number 18-0625. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to vacate Finley Avenue is approved.
Is anyone here to accept the proclamation from Ms. Katie Ruth White? Now, we will get this delivered to her. Ms. White is celebrating her 100th birthday and we've got a special proclamation for her that we will get delivered to her. Every quarter, we recognize an employee as the employee of the quarter and we discussed for this quarter who we were going to choose and we just couldn't choose one person. We ended up choosing a whole department. That's the Public Works Department. The roads they keep up, the flowers, all the work they do, weekends, there are people from that department at middle of the night ordering flowers and led by credit jerkins, but lots and lots of really good dedicated employees. So I'm gonna read the proclamation and then ask those that are here to come forward to Proclamation. In recognition of the outstanding work that keeps our city vibrant, whereas the City of Bruton seeks to honor the workers who keep our city economically and aesthetically vibrant, and whereas economic development depends on municipal operations running smoothly in public spaces unsurpassed in our region, and whereas the City of Bruton Public Works Department devotes thousands of hours of service above and beyond the call of duty, and whereas the parks, planks, baskets, sidewalks, and other improvements to the city bear witness to their hard work and successful efforts, and whereas this successful effort happens as a result of the entire department and as such is earned honors as the city's employee of the quarter. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the City of Bruton, Alabama, the City of Bruton Public Works Department be honored by the city and its residents as Bruton's employee of the quarter. Claim this 25th day of June 2018. Y'all come forward. I was looking at some trees the other day in a picture, in Paris Springs. And I said, "Greg, what do you think about these trees?" And it were purple trees. He liked them, I liked them, somehow he found out the type of tree they were, where we could get those types of trees, would they live in this climate? Said, "See some purple trees one day, see all of the fruit, you'll know what they're like." So I went to make it anyhow. Greg, maybe we get stuff done just a second. You call Greg and that's, whatever it is that we need is taken care of right now. So we really appreciate that, hold for. Next item is a figure from Mayor's Police Chief Performance Procedure, Resolution Number
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 18-0625-1.
Sir.
Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Roth to approve Resolution Number Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson? Motion carries and the resolution to approve Police Chief appointment procedure is approved.
I ask Jill Need to come forward, please with Saint Eek, and discuss the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Engineering Group.
Thank you very much and happy to be here today. We have a proposal for you for a transportation plan for the City of Bruton and this would be a citywide transportation plan. And the city here has been very proactive in conducting master plan studies in the past and we've accomplished a lot by doing these master plan studies and proactively addressing things that were identified in these studies. However, at this time, you do not have a transportation plan study that identifies transportation needs now and in the future. And so that would be, the proposal here would be to provide this study that would benchmark the current transportation system, forecast short-term and long-term needs, and then we would make recommendations for those needs. So the city has a desire that's really aimed at improving the livability of all the citizens of Bruton. And to support these initiatives, the transportation plan would examine traffic congestion on arterial routes and impact on livability in the growth corridors. We would look at access to facilities. We would also look at bike ped type accommodations, bicycle accommodations, pedestrian accommodations, the safety, we're concerned about addressing safety, and again, the bicycle facilities in connection to different areas. And then we would look at high crash locations where road safety performance needs, you know, need to be improved. And so our proposal would be data collection, a traffic analysis, and recommendations. And let me also say, in conjunction with that, the mayor and our staff have had meetings with Alabama Department of Transportation and one of the things that's needed is to read time with traffic signals on Highway 31. And Alabama DOT, thanks to the mayor's influence, has agreed to, the valuable fund that project to read time the traffic signals on Highway 31. And so that would be a separate project that my firm would work directly for out there. And so the proposal here would be for us to take traffic counts this summer because you have different, different conditions here. The traffic volume going to the beach during the summertime is much different than the remainder of the year. So we would take traffic counts in the summer and then we would also take fall traffic counts. Those traffic counts would be included in the Alabama DOT proposal, they would pay for that, except for the roads outside Highway 31, some of your city streets and then in the corridor area. So we would take that and develop a signal, traffic signal timing plan for Highway 31. And what I envision there is two separate timings. I envision one set of timing for during the summertime conditions when you've got heavy traffic and then a separate timing for the remainder of the year. And we could set that up with your equipment and set it up where those work at different times. So that's the proposal here on the transportation plan. I'd be happy to address any questions at this time regarding that.
And that's Resolution Number 18-0625-2.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 18-0625-2.
Sir.
Motion by Councilor Weaver, second by Councilor Roth to approve Resolution Number Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to approve the citywide transportation plan agreement or service agreement with Saint Associates Incorporated is approved.
How we perform, I also agreed to fix the crossing on Lee Street on the railroad track in front of the Bank of Bruton and a few other things, but that was one of the major things they agreed that.
Good job, Mayor. Good job there.
Keep working on them, we'll see what we get. Next item is to approve a saying Comprehensive Pavement Maintenance Plan. And I call him Joe again to.
Okay, a separate item here. At this time, City of Bruton does not have a formal plan to help you address pavement maintenance of all of your, your city streets. So this proposal would, you know, evaluate, we would evaluate all of the city streets within Bruton and we would categorize those, you know, roadways based on their condition. And that could be from, you know, poor condition to fair to, to good condition. And so based on the condition of those streets, we would present a plan for, and I would envision this plan being over five to 10-year period whereby the, the City of Bruton would have a plan in place on how to implement preventive maintenance and upkeep, you know, of the, of the roadways within the city. And ideally, you would be, if you're repairing, if you're, if you're repairing your city streets and keeping them in good order, you know, like sealing, you know, cracks and maintaining the streets, then we would expect the, the life expectancy of those roadways to be a lot more, a lot longer than if you have to do a total replacement of a roadway. So that would be, the idea would be to have sealing and maintenance and then, you know, the next condition would be mill and overlay and reconstruction. And so we say this, you know, save them, save them a lot of money in the future if you're able to have a plan and focus on the maintenance of the streets that you have and then identifying that and keeping that up on a regular basis.
What this also will do for us, it will give us a fixed dollar amount every year that we need to spend. As I think most people would know, we've been on a major paving campaign for the last six years or so and even right now, we've got two major paving projects going on. Well, when you do that, you're spending a whole lot of money and then no money, a whole lot of money. And we're trying to also be able to budget long-term so that you keep your road in good condition rather than waiting to their haul to terrible condition then trying to fix it. And then also extend the life of these roads by proper maintenance. And so hopefully will serve us if we could, we hope to copy a lot of the things that the county does on their roads. They've got a good computer system, how they keep up with it and it's, hopefully we can do a lot of that to, I say especially levelize the budget and keep basically everybody's road in decent condition and the roads that are more heavily traveled than other roads get attention on a more regular basis than, let's say, the road in front of my house or just a neighborhood road.
And maybe the end product would be that we would provide this plan and the plan could be provided in such a format that it could be utilized with a GIS asset management, you know, system. And so the way that we provide the information could be put into a GIS asset management system. We could help the city staff evaluate, you know, different types of GIS systems and we could help implement that as well would be something if it's a city desirous to do that.
And that's Resolution Number 18-0625-3.
I make motion to approve Resolution 18-0625-3.
Second. Motion by Councilor Brown, second by Councilor Weaver to approve Resolution Number 18-0625-3. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
No.
Motion carries and the resolution is, Resolution for the Citywide Pavement Management Plan is approved.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a agreement with Bar Jean on our runway lighting rehabilitation engineering agreement and I will call Earl Lambert to discuss that.
Mayor and Councilor, the resolution that we, that we have up there, this is a yearly function of our, our current grant for the airport. This will be the, the engineering portion of that grant and we, we selected this firm several years ago over five, they changed, they recently changed their name. Was BWSC Barts Wagner Center Cannon and we've been using them for several years. Now they're calling itself Barts Design Solutions. But I'd like you to know that, I'm gonna give you just, I don't mean to be redundant, but you might consider this a, a little update in with the promotion of this resolution. We, for the, I'm gonna take the last three years. In the last three years, the 16, 17, 18, I'm including this year, the airport's gotten just a little over a million dollars in two grants. And those grants are, all of them, most all that we get are 90, 10, federal being the 90% comes from the FAA and then the 10% will be 5% of the Department of Transportation, the Aeronautics Bureau, and the city file. And that's, that's how they've been broken down. The only variable in that sometimes is they run tight on their money and may elect not to participate, but that, that hasn't happened lately and they are, they are participating in this year's grant. This year's grant is $317,000. And it's, what we're doing last, last year, a little over a year ago, we extended the taxiway and the new FAA spec calls for LED lighting. Well, they put LED lighting in on the taxiway work we did, but the rest of the airport was still in the old wind condenser bulbs and they're very inefficient. They get hot. Hot means they use a lot of electricity and we, we went back to the FAA to complete the airport all LED and that's the, that's the bulk of this grant. All the runway lighting will be LED and I, we could calculate that, but there would be quite a power saving to the city on the power bill, on those LED bulbs. In with this grant, we're, we're putting a new rotating beacon, not refurb, we've refurbished that one a couple of times and it's, it's old technology. We can't depend on it, it's, it's out now. But we've got a new rotating beacon, they're rehabbing and re-flat checking our PAPI system, which I won't, I won't go into details of that with you, but it's a, it's a landing aid and there's a safety portion of this grant. We've got an old closed runway, the north-south runway, been closed for years. The FAA wants the pavement backed up away from our active. It still crosses it. If you wrote, if you went down it, the, the old pavement would go right up to the new runway and run on the cross. They want that torn out and backed up to what they call the safety zone, back away from that active runway. And that's, that's also in this grant. But I'd like to say again, it's, the total's 317, but the city's portion of that and the city's portion of this bill will be 5%. That'd be about $15,000 for this 300,000 worth of work. And I'd like, I, I, I'd like to use this, just a little bit of this time, the, over the last three years, the million dollars, we've, that's cost the city just a little over their share matching, it's been a little over 50,000. But the airport has generated in-house those matching funds. We operate, you know, the airport operates outside the general fund and we've been fortunate enough to, as an enterprise account, to be able to generate our matching funds where we don't have to come to you to, to ask for funds out of general fund. And of course, we also make enough operating and you should be, you and the citizens should be proud of that. I'm proud because it's, the airport really doesn't cost the taxpayers money out of the general fund. And the airport's in the, it's in good fiscal and financial condition. All the hangars are full and everything's going well with it. And I'd like you to consider promoting this resolution.
I hear you. And that's Resolution Number 18-0625-4. There are two, that's Resolution Number 18-0625-4.
Second. Motion by Councilor Roth, second by Councilor Watson to approve Resolution 18-0625-4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to engage Barts Design Solutions for the rehabilitation project at the airport is approved.
And the next resolution, I'd like you to put up an act and read that one out.
Okay. Resolution Number 18-6025-5 to approve funding for YMCA swimming instructors and lifeguards. Whereas the City of Bruton currently supports citywide youth sports by funding YMCA to fund and manage aspects of those programs. And whereas the Bruton Sportsman's Club has requested $2,250 to pay instructors and lifeguards for a summer youth swimming program to be held at Bruton Area YMCA, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bruton, Alabama, that the city approves the expenditure of $2,250 for instructional expenses for said summer youth swimming program.
And I'd like to thank Councilor Watson. He took the bull by the horns and done the negotiation with the WAP on this. We're also secretly going to offer free transportation to pick children up, take them there, bring them back with ECAT so we can get that worked out. Was it 45 minutes of instruction and 45 minutes of just free swim time? So it's more to it than just instruction. So. That is Resolution Number 18-0625-5.
Yes, sir. Let me restart. 18-6025-5.
Now, we're wrong.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 18-6025-5.
Sir. Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Weaver to approve Resolution Number Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Roth?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to fund the youth swimming program at YMCA is approved.
Under comments and announcements, we are, a few months back, Council voted to approve a contract with Gilbert Mills and Kaywood to, to work on the public library and we were fixing to bid that out. The scope of work is a full roof replacement, stucco repairs, brick repairs, stucco and trim repair, exterior painting, demo and reinstall curbside ramp, ADA parking spaces to meet ADA requirements, demo and reinstall entrance ramp to meet ADA requirements. And we've added a number of ultimates. Altimate's new exterior LED lighting with some color options. Altimate landscaping, interior works code, which is part of the bid, is interior lights will be replaced with LED lighting. The office interior lighting replaced will be identified The office interior lighting replaced will be identified as an alternate. The project electrical engineer will look into co-color changing lights to bring some visual appeal to the space for large public gardens. An alternate on one is the public restroom renovations, full demolitions of restaurants with new wall coverings, ADA plumbing fixtures, flooring, et cetera. Reusable accessories will be stored and reused. The women's restroom may need to remove one water closet and rework the layout to provide ADA required clearance. The interior painting will be added back to the scope work as an alternate. And there will be glass, window glass repairs and new ceiling fans. So that will be, open bid in July or August. We hope construction will be finished by the end of January. So. We've been discussing how we're gonna do that. Because obviously a lot of this work is gonna have all the books covered up and computers covered up. Whether we have to move something out of there to another space. Construction does cause a mess and we just gonna have to work through that until we can get it finished. The other thing I want to make sure people knew that the public library offers a free lunch program every day. And people should be taking advantage of that. And the New Beginnings offers a free food giveaway every Friday afternoon from four to five o'clock. I think it's fifteen meals in each box. So people should be taking advantage of these programs that are out there and funded by your city. So, are there any other comments or announcements?
I have it over there.